Good evening, we call the meeting to order. First of all, we have been in executive session since 3:00 P.M. And we did not cover any topic that is not indicated on the published agenda during that time period, there were no decisions made, and there were no votes taken during that session. So I need then for a motion to come from closed session to open session.
I move we execute executive session to open session.
It's moved as their second. It's moved and seconded, we leave closed session into open session, all those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you. We go into public section now, and the call to order, we please roll call for the President.
Mr. Sherry? President. Mr. Ruiz?
Present.
Mr. Robinson?
Present.
I'm gonna back up, because I did that wrong, we should have done a roll call for the moving out of the closed session to open session, so I'm gonna go back and ask the Secretary, please do that.
Mr. Sherry? Present. Yes. Oh, yes, I'm sorry. Mr. Ruiz?
Yes.
Mr. Robinson?
Yes.
Yes. All right, we all please stand for pledges, please.
The United States of America, and a true republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. The flag of the United States of America is the symbol of her precious and common united culture.
Thank you. All right, we'll move then into the reports, beginning with student council.
Good afternoon, Mr. President, members of the board, Dr. Romero. I am Anthony, Executive President of Student Council. Today, we're going to be talking about additional homecoming items, wherever been week, our mayor's roundtable meeting, our children's project, and upcoming trips. Before we begin, I'd like to introduce you to some of our other members.
My name is Caitlin DRC, I'm sophomore secretary.
Hi, my name is Chloe Johnson, and I am the junior class vice president.
Hi, I'm Chloe Galván, and I am freshman class vice president.
All righty, and the first thing in our agenda was homecoming. Homecoming ended a little over a month ago, and I wanted to give you guys a little update, a final update to say. And so, on Friday, we did have a lot of activities planned to make up for Thursday. At first, we had a parade, which many students enjoyed, and also boosted a lot of spirit. We had a Powerpuff, which junior surprisingly won. And then, we had our homecoming third prep rally. The pep rally was where we also gave the spirit sticks. It's basically given to the class with the most spare answers, spirit. Sophomores won the underclassmen's spirit stick, and the seniors won the upperclassmen's one. And our last item was the homecoming dance, which went smoothly and without interruption. After the dance ended, so did homecoming week, and we hope you're excited for what we have in store in the future.
So I will be talking about Red Ribbon Week, which will start tomorrow, October 23rd to the 31st. In order to prepare for Red Ribbon Week, we had a marriage roundtable with John Costilla González, Angie Martinez, and Benny Hasso. Student council came up with a homeroom lesson to learn about drugs and alcohol prevention, and dress up days for the week. So as a requirement of New Mexico Association of Student Councils, we're putting together a children's project for our state competition. And to help further plan, we had a mayor's roundtable meeting with Benny Hasso, Mrs. Padron, and a representative from the Department of Health to discuss ideas.
All right, as many know, we are going to district conference this Thursday. What district conference is, is where everyone from the southwestern part of Mexico, all student council members, meet up in one school or one place, and we basically learn how to improve our leadership, and what, how to better our schools, and...
We are also working with broadcaster National Auto Society and JRF to plan a hundred has for Halloween. And that's all we have, does anybody have any questions?
What's your district conference topic?
Last case. Thank you.
Thank you all. Thank you. All right, and we'll move on to the National Association of Students.
Hello, Mr. President, members of the board, Dr. Romero, enjoying the rainy weather, right? It's been an enjoyable day, I guess, but the calm is there with the rain. So, I think, as I previously started to talk to you about, like I said, we owe it to our students and to our staff to be the best employers that we can. And one of the issues has been the ESS company coming in and taking over substitutes.
Why don't you say that for that action item that comes up? Do you want to comment on that action item?
But if I do it during the action item, it takes up ten minutes.
Yeah, but this should be just about like you ought to.
This is one of the things that we are...
Make it very short, this is for pre-reports.
We can't hear you.
I'm just commenting, her comments are more relevant to one of the action items that's coming up in what she's, in this portion, so if she's gonna do something now, it needs to be very brief, that's why I said...
That's fine, I'll be brief. So, the NEA's position on this is really simple, and I've expressed this directly to Dr. Romero a couple times. We currently pay substitutes that have no college eight dollars an hour. Walmart starts employees at twelve dollars an hour, okay? Is that providing the best people in the classroom for our students? Thank you.
I actually have one. I just would not ask you a question.
That's good.
Well, I, can I make a comment then? Actually, I had a question, and last meeting, you talked about community schools, and that seems to be more relevant in helping the community and the students, and you would have an update for us today?
For community schools? Yes, so unfortunately, the person that we are working with, with NEA, has fallen down on the job. This weekend, I'll actually be at a conference and able to talk to the President of NEA New Mexico, because we have not received the 500-plus paper copies, we have not received the data from them, and in fact, I found out on Thursday that he didn't even pick up the data.
So again, we don't have an update?
No. And like I said, I did not find out until Thursday that he has not even picked them up. So, like I said, I will be going this weekend and talking to somebody at NEA about collecting that, because it is, it is a lot of data to have 500 of those to go through, roughly. I think there's a little more than that.
You got a question? Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, there's no parent advisory committee meeting to report tonight, so move to the board spotlight, which I was gonna do tonight, I thought I was gonna have two big reports to give tonight, but they're both basically the same thing. I attended, or we attended, the Region 8 School Board meeting a few weeks ago, and I was part of the School Board Association's Resolutions Committee in Albuquerque just recently, to look at items for the School Board Association to work on with the legislature when it goes into session after the first of the year. But as it actually turns out, both events basically talked about the same thing, which is, I'm sure most in the room will understand, is the almost $2 million surplus money that the district, the state has suddenly come up with, and how to spend it for next year, and in school security. That seems to be the two big focuses right now on much of anything you talk about, and so that was basically the theme, most of the resolutions that were submitted by school districts around the state all dealt with those two, those two issues. Everybody has their ideas about how that money ought to be spent, so that's gonna become the big issue for the legislature to try to figure out. Pretty much the resolutions that are the, the information coming from the region meeting was the same thing that we as districts need to make sure our input is up there for Santa Fe, so that dimming schools is represented, and our feelings about legislation and how the money's gonna be spent needs to be clearly understood. So, that's pretty much the things of both of those meetings, but they're very critical on what comes up next to, next year if the legislature starts to meet, so I think we need to understand that it's gonna be an exciting year for legislature, they're gonna be at this time, I don't think it's gonna be one of those dull sessions. I think it's gonna be very lively. Anyone have any comments on the region meeting, you want to fill in? Just keep me updated. All right, just do that, all right, thank you. All right, we're moving into the consent agenda, and as part of the consent agenda, doing public schools accountability procedures, and as recommended by the state auditor, three bills were randomly selected and audited by the board. The board also reviewed a bunch of reports from the Activities Fund. All procedures met state and district regulations. And so, may I have a motion then to approve the consent agenda?
I vote you present, or approve the consent agenda.
Is there a second?
Second.
It's been moved and seconded to approve the consent agenda, all those in favor? Any opposed? Thank you. As public comment, as we move into the action items, public comment will be allowed, the public has the opportunity to provide comment on agenda items as the board proceeds through the agenda. Comments will be limited to ten minutes, the time limit is given in an effort to allow public input, but also to move the agenda forward in a prompt and efficient manner. So with that, we'll move then over to the action items. And I'll call in Dr. Romero for the first item.
Thank you, Mr. President, we can have a number of action items this evening. The first ones have to do with approval of budget adjustment requests. So we have a number of different items there, and so we have some different individuals that can give the board just a quick summary of what these are. I'm gonna read them off real quick, we have our operation, our K3+, our preschool idea B, our English language acquisition, our immigrant Title III, our Title IV, our pre-K initiatives, Title I, our family texting initiative, and our four-five pilot update. So with that, I'm gonna start off by turning over to Mrs. Doyle, she's gonna talk to us a little bit really quickly about our operational budget adjustment request.
Thank you. Members of the board, Dr. Romero, the operational budget, actually, I worked with the maintenance department, as well as the transportation department, to come up with a improved process as it relates to mechanics, as it relates to, drawing a complete blank here, oh, fixing the fleet vehicles. Thank you. Previously, that had, the budget was not necessarily aligned with how we were supposed to, how we were doing that. So this budget adjustment actually takes it out of the function that is primarily transportation, and puts it into the maintenance function, which is where we actually expend the funds to repair and maintain the vehicles for the fleet.
Any questions on the operational part? We're gonna go into our K3+, we had a successful K3+ month, or 25 days, and so with that, we just wanna give a quick financial update to that, Mr. Will.
So the budget for both K3+ and the four-five pilot is prepared ahead of any projections that we have for students. So when we prepare the budget, we really prepare based on who we think is going to come, and then, you know, as we wrap it up, and we have actual numbers on who actually attended, then we really align the budget based on those, those numbers, and that's what these bars do.
Any questions with K3+ or the four-five pilot, they're very similar. Can we move on to our idea B, again, Mrs. Doyle?
This is just a carryover, we're actually increasing our initial allocation in our idea B fund, there's really nothing, you know, much to speak of here, except for that it's just an additional allocation that the state has given us.
Any questions? Can we move on to our English language acquisition, Mr. Chavez?
President Anderson, members of the board, Dr. Romero, the English language acquisition is our Title III grant, and we're just doing a maintenance bar to move money around, our, it's going over to salaries, our, our language specialist had an increase from level two to level three, and so we had to move around to cover our salary.
Questions?
And Title III, Mr. Chavez?
Title III, the immigrant grant, this is the immigrant grant that we received this year, and one of the areas that we had budgeted for was student travel, but after getting the program going and in place, we determined that we didn't need student travel, so we're moving that money around, and putting it into software where we can better serve kids.
Questions? Comments? Move on to Title, Title IV, Mr. Chavez?
Title IV is a new grant that, well, we received it last year, but it's changed significantly for this year, and this is the initial budget for the grant, and I'll be presenting more in detail the information on the program during the action items.
Questions?
And I'm gonna shift back over to Mrs. Doyle, she's gonna talk to us about our pre-K initiative, don't go anywhere, Mr. Chavez.
The pre-K initiative again is just moving funds out of our salary lines into lines that are more appropriate, so that we can spend on the lines that the director deems appropriate.
Next one?
Now on to Title I, Mr. Chavez?
Title I, we have several bars, we have a transfer and two maintenance bars, and this is just cleanup, we're, we have a lot of changes that happened with staffing, different increases from levels, level one to level two, or level two to level three, and just moving money around to cover all our expenses in the different line items.
Questions?
And then our last budget adjustment request, this is, this is a new initiative in the district, so I'm excited about this, this is something that's gonna be very valuable to our, to our families, so before that, I'm gonna turn over to Mr. Parker, he's gonna give us a quick update on what the family texting initiative is.
Good evening, President Anderson, members of the board, and Dr. Romero, in front of you is a new initiative that we applied for. As part of the 2018 legislative session, they adopted House Bill 2, which appropriated approximately $300,000 for the state to increase automatic test messaging for parents specifically, and for this is targeted for high school parents and families to be appraised with absences, testing, assessments, just general information for high schools. So in front of you is the result of an application that we put in, which was approved for $22,800 to bring to the development of what we're branding as the Wildcat app, that will not only benefit high school students, but all students and families across the district that will choose to download an application and allow some communication, both from various school sites, different departments they elect to set up. So the idea behind that would be that a parent could easily go on and say, I would like updates from Dr. Romero, the superintendent, or board, as well as the high school, and also have a child in Red Mountain, and maybe in elementary school, and then they would receive messages directly to their phone from that messaging service, and so that would be our own Wildcat app. We'd also integrate other communication protocols for safety, cafeteria, nutrition services, athletics, instruction, embedded that as well, so it increases our more robust communication protocol. And one of the pieces that comes up a little bit different, because a lot of people say, well, don't we have that integrated in our current information system? And that is true, but it also requires that you stay logged on. What this does is allows for push notifications, so if you download the app, you can elect to push notifications, and you will, you'll receive those instantly, and so that's a little bit different. And then the other thing, that it doesn't require a cellphone number, as long as you have a cellphone with network access, you're gonna be able to receive those notifications. So it does diversify the ability for parents to receive notifications without necessarily having a working cellphone, as long as they're connected to a wireless network. Through some of the information we found, more people maintain network connectivity than an actual cellphone, cellphone numbers will change, things like that, but their ability to access information through a Wildcat app will help. So this is gonna, we're gonna select a messaging system partner, and they will custom build an application for us, and then we'll integrate it with our current system. So we're really excited about being able to offer that.
So it wouldn't necessarily mean that someone had to have a cellphone that was contracted with Verizon or AT&amp;T, they gotta have a prepaid cellphone?
They could have a pre, as long as they have the ability to download an app, it could be on an iPad device, any device that you can download, an Apple or an Android, Android app, you'll be able to have access to it. Very similar, I believe, that the county developed an app there for allowing the city for them to allow to get information, it'd be very similar to that, but really targeted for public schools and the information. That could come up for individual sites, departments, emergency notifications, it will just go out immediately to the...
We're gonna do some sort of advertising, or don't people know that it's out there?
Yes, yes, we have both. A wonderful person's just come on for marketing and publicity, that's gonna be taking that on.
Who is?
She's, she's very excited about that as well.
List of her duties, yes.
President, by the way, when do you expect to launch the app?
Now, once we get this approved, and we're gonna set up some basic conversation internally, and then we'll look at the parameters that we want to do, and then reach out, there are about three different vendors that work with, we've got general quotes, at the top end of about $15,000, as you'll see in the budget, but it may be anywhere between that. It's important enough that while this, our, if it kind of covers the high school end of it, we may need to complement that with operational funds to make sure that we can offer that to every single student. We're hoping for the launch to be in the spring, and in fact, because this money can't be carried over, we need to expand that by, I'd like to expand it by a year.
Thank you. Other questions? Thank you. Dr. Romero?
Thank you, Mr. President, so with that, I do recommend the approval of all the budget adjustment requests.
Recommendation is for approval, is there a motion?
Send it.
It's been moved, is there a second?
Second.
It's been moved and seconded, all those in favor? Any opposed? Thank you, item B is accepted and approved. Item B?
Item B, thank you, Mr. President, this is for consideration of and the approval of a resolution and proclamation of a special public school capital improvement tax election. B and C are very similar, so I might talk about them at the same time, but to stick with B, this is, it's our time, it's that time of year again where we are going to be up for our two-mill SB9 elections, the 2019. So very quickly, what this is, is this is a funding source that we're able to get into a two-mill election, it's a six-year cycle. Basically, real simply, this is, this allows us to be able to collect two dollars for every thousand dollars in property taxes that are taxable. To give you some of the background of what we've been able to receive in the past, over the last six years, we generally receive about 1.16 million to 1.2 million dollars a year, and really, what that money is used for is to be able to provide our district with preventive maintenance on our facilities. It also allows us to buy equipment for, for school use, to be able to maintain those facilities, but it also allows us to be able to have that unforeseeable type of funds there that may allow us to be able to do something like if an air conditioner goes out, or a boiler goes out, and you wanna be able to have a funding source to be able to supply those emergency type of situations. So with, like I talked about, we usually get, we get about 1.16 million dollars a year out of this last two-mill SB9 funding per year, and we usually allocate about $750,000 for those unforeseeable repairs, and then we use the rest of that money for capital improvements on all of our school sites. Some of those improvements are gonna be things like fencing projects, playground equipment, fiber optic expansion, these are all things that we've done in the past, school sign design, paving for parking lots and bus drop-offs, fire alarm upgrades, things like that. And so, what we're asking for is the board's support and to be able to, now that we're going, done with the six-year cycle, we're gonna be moving into the next six-year cycle, and asking for us to be able to hold that election for our two-mill levy in SB9.
Questions? Might mention that this election is a oops on the part of the New Mexico Legislature?
So that's gonna get us into C here.
Into C?
Yes.
Because they changed all the voting dates for non-political elections, but they forgot to make the exception for things like SB9.
Correct.
And because we run out at the end of February, we would be without funds until November, at least.
Correct.
If we don't, if we don't do this, we have to do this at our own cost, because it's outside the new legislation.
So item C is the consideration of an approval of a resolution authorizing and directing a special election procedure. So we can, we can finish with, we can talk about B, and then what I'm gonna be asking for is for us to be able to move that, and ask for a special election, so that we don't have to hold it in November, but we can actually hold it in February, and that'll allow us to not lose out on those funds for that amount of time. So this is, this is one of those things that we're having to do, and many other districts across the state are having to do, as they are moving to this new election cycle. This is one of the things for many districts, as they're going through these two-mill SB9 funds, they're having to hold these special elections, so that we don't lose out on the funding locally.
Comments? Questions? No? Any others? We're gonna look then for a recommendation on B first?
On B, yes, sir, Mr. President, I do recommend that we approve the consideration of an approval of a resolution and proclamation of a special public school capital improvement tax election.
Recommended, is there a motion? It's moved, is there a second?
Second.
It's moved and seconded, all those in favor? Any opposed? Item B is accepted and passed, item C then?
Thank you, Mr. President, this is, again, the consideration of an approval of a resolution authorizing and directing a special election procedure, so what we're asking is for support to be able to move the, the new election date of November up into February of 2019, so it'll allow us to be able to stay on, on cycle and schedule with our current SB9, two-mill elections.
Recommended for approval, is there a motion? It's moved, is there a second?
Second.
It's been moved and seconded, all those in favor? Any opposed? Thank you. I will mention that the legislature is supposed to try to fix this in the next session, so that this doesn't happen again, next time it comes around, and hopefully maybe to reimburse the school districts, which are having to, I think, hurt on their own this time, so we will hope that session will take care of that for us. All right, moving to item D.
Thank you, Mr. President, this is for... This is for the approval of the Sentinel K-9 service contract. What this is, is we've, we've been able to contract with a regional K-9 service to be able to provide searches for, they do things like drug searches and weapon searches, things like that. It's something that we've done for the last years. It's been very successful, is to make sure that we do have a safe environment for our schools. Again, this is something that we have worked with in the past. We just want to be able to continue that relationship into the future. This is for K-9 services for this full year.
Comments, questions, random? Anyone in the audience have comments or questions?
I have a question. How often do you use this?
So it happens randomly. And it happens, so with this contract, the contract's for about $5,200 last year. We're starting a little bit later this year, so it's probably going to be a little bit less than that. It allows for a certain number of visits that we have with them. They're going to be able to work with our high school, our intermediate school, or our middle school. It happens, I'm going to ask, let me ask assistance here. How many, how many times do we do this?
I would say in a semester, maybe twice.
Right, right. And so, and that's probably an average of what we do twice a semester per school site. And so I think the first visit is set up for the high school for this week, in this case.
Any other questions? Can I answer anyone? And if not, Dr. Romero, recommendation?
Thank you, Mr. President. I do recommend the approval of the Sentinel K-9 service contract.
Recommended for approval, is there a motion? It's been moved, is there a second? It's been moved and seconded, all those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? I think the motion is accepted and passed. Moving on to item B.
Thank you, Mr. President. This is for the approval of the Title IV Grant application. And with that, I'm going to turn it over again to Mr. Chavis. He, he mentioned it in his previous comments and he'll get to talk to us a little bit more about that Title IV Grant.
President Anderson, members of the board, Dr. Romero. I'm really excited to talk about the Title IV Grant. The Title IV Grant is broken up into three different areas. One is well-rounded education. The second is safe and healthy schools. And the third is effective use of technology. And so what we, what we've decided to do in talking to different principals, getting different feedback from teachers and such, is we're going to expand our Project Lead the Way program. As you know, as part of our CTE program over at Deming High School, we, one of the programs that we implement is Project Lead the Way for the pre-engineering program. And so what we're going to do with this grant, and part of the grant, is to take those services down to Red Mountain Middle School and Deming Intermediate. And so we're going to focus on three different areas, computer science, engineering, and biomedical science. As you can see just from the titles, these are highly rigorous type classes. And the whole goal is to develop the essential skills such as problem solving, critical thinking, communication, collaboration, perseverance. And so we've already met with the two principals and the two, and the three teachers that'll be implementing these programs. But we want to have a vertical alignment between Deming Intermediate, Red Mountain Middle School, and then over into Deming High School. So that's part, that's the first part. The second part is, Deming High School came to us very, very motivated in wanting to implement the Capturing Kids' Hearts program. And you're familiar with it because we implement that over at Deming Intermediate currently. And you know they've gotten lots of attention, a lot of good attention that's come from them, a lot of good results. And so Deming High School would like to take that program and implement it over at their school. And the primary that that works on, that that focuses on is decreasing discipline referrals, increasing student achievement, increasing attendance rates, increasing graduation rates, and increased teacher satisfaction. And so we're really looking forward to that, being able to implement that. We'd have to wait until the summertime because we need to consecutive days for training, but we're hoping we can get that done in June for deployment in August of 2019. The third part of the grant is, will allow us to do something that I don't think we've ever done before, and that is, Mr. Parker had a meeting with the, our school counselors. And one of the things that they talked about was professional development and the touchy issues that they deal with. And so this grant is going to allow us to partner with the American School Counselors Association and offer some professional developments for our counselors in three different areas. The first one is legal and ethical complications of working with minors in schools. The second is data-driven school counseling. And the third is cyberbullying and internet safety. And so those are the three areas. And the last piece to that is being able to provide professional development for all of our administrators and/or counselors, assistant principals, TOSSAs, and restorative practices. And so it's, it's a practice that we are looking to implement to take off from most groups of public schools is currently implementing and it's showing a lot of good success in alternative measures to suspensions and such. And so it's a, it's a package that really focuses on the kids and keeping them in school. And so those, anytime we can offer opportunities for, for students and our staff, it's a good thing. And so we're really excited about this Title IV grant and we think that that's what will create opportunities for students and staff. Questions?
Questions, comments? Any comments, comments, questions? Dr. Romero?
Thank you, Mr. President. I am also very excited about this opportunity. I know Mr. Chavis and others have been working really hard on putting this plan together, and so we're really excited about how this is going to roll out. So with that, I do recommend the approval of the Title IV Grant application.
Recommendation is for approval, is there a motion? It's been moved, is there a second? It's been moved and seconded, all those in favor? Any opposed? Thank you. Item is accepted and passed. Item F?
Thank you, Mr. President. This is for the approval of our school advisory committees. In your board package, you're going to see names that have been submitted to you for approval. What these representatives will do will be part of that school advisory committee. And this is an important piece in the relationships that schools have with the community and parents. They're able to advise schools on different functions and different initiatives that they're having. These are, these are going to be community members and parents that are really attempting to be more a part of that school. And so I'm very excited to be able to have these people, these parents, as part of the school and part of the decision-making that happens. And so I want, this is, this is a, this is a good thing that we have these parents doing this. So we do have the names that have been submitted for school advisory committees. And really with that, I stand for any questions. These are the people that are going to be volunteering their time to be able to improve our schools. You know what I might ask is, let me, let me pick on a principal. There we go. Everybody's hiding all this. Melanie, can you just give us a quick, quick just idea of how you go about finding these people for our school advisory committees? And it may be a little different in these school sites, so I want to give the board just an idea about how this happens, how you build that relationship with them.
Okay, for the parents, I really tried to find parents that I know would come and provide input because that's really our main goal, is to hear input from the parents to improve our processes at school. So we worked hard and we found some really eager parents that are attending our advisory meetings and providing input. The community member, I try to pick someone that's not related to the schools so that we have that community perspective. So that was real important. So the community members are not usually tied to the school system at all. They're really tied to the community.
Excellent, thank you.
You're welcome.
With that, Mr. President, board, we stand for any questions?
Any questions, comments from board? Questions, comments from the audience? If not, recommendation?
Thank you, Mr. President. I do recommend the approval of the school advisory committees.
Recommended for approval, item F, is there a motion? It's been moved, is there a second? It's been moved and seconded to approve item F, all those in favor? Any opposed? Thank you. Item F is accepted and passed. Thank you. Item G?
Thank you, Mr. President. This is the approval of the resolution to hold a surplus sale. And for that, I'm going to call it Mr. Wertz. He's been working very hard to make this happen and make it a reality. He's, he's close. So my turn, I'll be Mr. Wertz to give us an update.
Thank you. Good evening, President Anderson, members of the board, Dr. Romero. What you have before you is a list of all the furniture that has been left over from Deming Intermediate, Deming High School, and Hope Tech High School campus. We have been working over the past several months to a year to disperse as much of that throughout the district as we can. It was impossible to keep track of what we sent to other schools and we sent a lot throughout the district. What I did capture is on the back report. But in addition, we've been able to send a lot of that to government agencies, city, county, and down into Mexico, we've sent quite a bit of furniture with Dr. Romero's approval. They want more, but we promised the community an auction of all the surplus. So what you have before you is a list of everything that is currently staged for auction and everything that we are currently using in the classrooms of the teachers that have not yet moved into the campus. And that should be pretty, a pretty inclusive list of everything that we will have going up in this auction. So the proposal is to have a, to approve it so we can send this on to the state, I believe, and I may be speaking, we're hoping to have the auction, I think, in January, probably mid-January, so we can get everything out. And I think the next phase of construction has to start in early February. So that's the timeframe.
Questions? Now, I know when we had the surplus sale for computer items, they're basically worthless. They're just paperweights is what they are. Some of this, I don't want to say this, but could be functional?
Most of it is functional. We, at our discretion, we kind of looked at what wasn't functional and what wasn't has been hauled off to the dump. If it was broken furniture, if it was, yeah, most of it was broken or really old and not functioning real well. Keep in mind, we have desks from 1950s that are still in perfect working order and they're going in the auction. So age really had nothing to do with it. It had more of the functionality to the furniture.
So there is, it's not like you're just putting on a paperweight and you do have computers. You might actually get something that you could use.
Correct. And we also have a whole, the bottom, the last part of the list is actually things that we have in the maintenance yard, facility yard that have been there a while and we don't know why we're storing them. Nobody wants them. They've been removed from playgrounds because of updated playground stuff and they're just sitting there. And so we're going to be palletizing those and moving those over into school to have auction at the same time.
Any other comments, questions? Dr. Romero?
Thank you, Mr. President. I do recommend the approval of a resolution to hold the surplus sale.
Do you have a question?
Yes, that's okay.
So where, what we do with the proceeds?
So the proceeds that we would get would go into our operational funds.
Any other questions from anyone? Questions about? Can you stand so we can hear you?
I'm just curious how that auction process, is it done internally or is it not like through government auction?
No, we will have an auctioneer on site and anybody can come register. And there's such a staggering amount of furniture, it's actually going to be in bid lots. So you may be bidding on, for instance, 14 tables or 100 chairs or something to that extent. We're hoping, there's been talk mid-December and mid-January. So I'm pushing for January, but it'll just depend on all the approval process and how it fits in the schedule.
That depends on how quickly we get into the north end of Hope Tech, too.
Correct. Yeah, if that construction gets delayed at all, everything gets pushed back again. You know, I may say that there's a lot of interest from the schools down across the border. And if we do have items that don't sell in auction, rather than taking them to the dump, we are going to be letting them come get everything they want before it goes to demolition.
On stuff that's donated, is it just passed right off? Or the amount is donated or has it already?
So all that happened is we wanted to be able to donate to other governmental organizations. And so that's what we've done. So we have been able to work sometimes with city, the county, with Columbus, and with government agencies and schools. You know, the intent in the end is for the equipment, the materials, the desks, the chairs to be able to be put to good use. And what we don't want to see happen, if at all possible, is it can be part of the demolition and just go into the trash. So we want to be able to try to support our neighbors as much as we can. We also want to be able to have this surplus sale so that the community can also benefit from it also. So it could be a little bit obvious.
Good questions. Anything else? No, Dr. Romero?
Thank you, Mr. President. So with that, I do recommend the approval of a resolution to hold a surplus sale.
It's been recommended to approve item G, is there a motion? It's been moved, is there a second? It's been moved and seconded, all those in favor? Any opposed? Thank you. Item G is accepted and passed. Item H?
Thank you, Mr. President. This is the, asking for the approval of revised minutes from our June 11, 2018 meeting. In your board packets under H, you're going to see there that there was just a missed typo in this. So I want to be able to take the opportunity to kind of set that record straight. We're striking the, that language that says to help the district with educational assistance. And it should have read to a substitute staff management agreement. And so I think this has caused some confusion with that. So we want to be able to take this opportunity to correct those minutes. It's just a very simple change from educational assistance to substitute staff management agreement.
Comments, questions? Anyone in the audience have a comment or question?
I'm keeping all the more trouble. On June 11, evidently, you held a closed meeting. That was advertised as a closed meeting. In that meeting, you evidently agreed to allow Superintendent Romero to sign a contract binding the school district to hundreds of thousands of dollars to a New Jersey for-profit corporation called BSBS. That was a total violation of the New Mexico Open Meeting Act. In that same meeting, you obviously, evidently authorized Denise Ruddle, your HR officer, to terminate the employment of an entire class of Deming School District employees without cause and without due process. That also is a violation of the Open Meeting Act. When you violate the Open Meeting Law, any action you take is void. That means now, since the beginning of school, you have been sending, authorizing and sending of hundreds of thousands of dollars to this corporation in New Jersey. That money should never have left our district. Also, all those substitute teachers who are terminated have a right to immediate reinstatement with compensation for the benefits they lost through this action. That's the legal part of it. The ethical part of it is the same ethical part that we all who are licensed by the Public Education Department of the state of New Mexico have to follow. Commitment to professional employment practices. We regard the employment agreement as a solemn pledge to be executed both in spirit and in fact in a manner consistent with the highest ideals of professional service. Sound professional personnel relationships with governing boards are built upon integrity, dignity, and mutual respect between employees, administrators, and local school boards. In fulfilling our obligations to professional employment practices, we adhere to and respect the conditions of a contract or the terms of an appointment until either has been terminated legally or by mutual consent. The substitute teachers did not consent. Now, this is a very small Now, this is a very small community. We don't have a very large job pool. With less than a week's notice, this district threw about 100 people onto the Deming job market. Now, at any one time, unless you're an M D N R N or a C D L driver, there may be five or six jobs available in Deming. And those are Walmart, Walgreens, or Wendy's for the most part. So these people had no choice. Most of them had no choice because this job meant support for their families. And many of these substitute teachers are parents, they have children in our district. They support sometimes disabled people and their families. They were given no choice. They had to apply and be hired by this outfit from New Jersey. Very similar to human trafficking, you take vulnerable people and you give them no choice. They didn't want to do this, but they did this because they had no choice. That's the unconscionable part of it. I have discussed this matter with the state agencies that have authority in our district. I'm sure it may have hurt some of you will hear before. But if you continue to send this money without proper contract in place, then you are in a serious violation. Now, I don't know if you've read this agreement with ESS, I've read every word. Have you read it? Right on its face, it violates the Families Educational Rights and Privacy Act. That's a Class IV felony because in that contract, you agreed to allow ESS to know, quote, "any students with violent tendencies." We don't label our students with this. And we certainly do not discuss our students with outsiders. We're very careful about discussing them among ourselves or with their parents. And that's federal law. What does your comment, Ms. Curtis?
Lady May, please continue.
There's no comment, just, if you need to finish, you're going to run out of time.
Yes. To conclude, you have taken a group of people who were so loyal. These people did nothing wrong, no, they gave you no reason to be terminated. They did more right than you had any right to respect. You haven't given them a raise in at least 20 years. They all put in more time than they're paid for. Many of them are more highly educated and have more educational experience than anyone in this room and maybe anyone in the entire school district. These people come because they want to. They love to be here, they love to be with the children, they respect our teachers, our teachers, we have wonderful teachers. I'm just, I'm so disappointed. I taught in this district for 10 years and chose to withdraw. I'm grieving because I miss, but I will not support an attempt to privatize our school district or to sell our people back to it at a 31% profit and that's exactly what we've done.
Any other comments? Are you talking about the, the minutes or are you talking about the?
No, my name is Sandra Matlinham. This is mine, I'm Terry.
Hi, Dr. Romero.
I am Sandra Mat, on the internet, Facebook. You need to know something before you change.
Okay, now you're off topic. This is not what we're talking about. We're talking about the item that is coming up, this iPad of heat, of mine. We're talking about the correction of the minutes, that's all we're talking about.
It's not correction. The minutes are a public record.
That's right, and you're correct.
You change them, you are committing a four-class felony.
So we need to move on then, because you're talking about.
Are you telling me the state is wrong?
Well, that's not the topic we're talking, dealing with right now.
I have filed with the attorney general.
I'm aware of that. That's not.
They already have all of the minutes, all of the agenda.
All of the violations that you have.
Okay, I gave you the choice.
Just, we're not on the topic. Thank you. Any other, anything else on revising the minutes? If not, Dr. Romero?
Thank you, Mr. President. I do recommend the approval of the revised minutes for June 11th, 2018.
Recommended for approval, is there a second?
Second.
Pardon me, a motion?
Make a motion.
Is there a second?
Second.
Remind, second, and all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, any opposed? Thank you, ladies, except. I'm going to move on then to, on, Dr. Romero?
Thank you, Mr. President. This is for the approval of the ESS West LLC Substitute Staff Placement Agreement. We've been able to work with this company for a few weeks now and we've had some wonderful results coming from this. And I'm really happy to be able to share those results now that we have some data to be able to share with the board. So thank you for allowing me to do this. As we know, substitutes are a vital part of success in the school district. With that, we want to be able to have every day be as educationally sound as possible for our students. But there are times when, you know, teachers may be sick. We work for professional development, they're working on planning and working and making the school a better place. So for that, we have to have substitutes come in. So a vital part of our school district. What we have done is we want to be able to provide a better model for that. Students are in school about 176 days a year. We want every one of those 176 days to be as efficient as possible. And so when teachers are out, we want to make sure that we have a good substitute in place to be able to continue that educational environment. What we've had in the past, and you know, I've worked for a number of school districts, so this is not unique to Deming, is that it's hard to always fill those positions. We have a number of times where there is no position that is filled because of a substitute. And so then that caused kind of ripple effect because then the school still has to be able to fill those positions. So then you may have a teacher having to cover for another teacher, you may have to have an educational assistant helping with the classroom. And that affects the entire school and that has another ripple effect on affecting the entire school district. So we did a lot of research with this. We were able to work and look at, we were looking at some solutions for how we could do this. And one of the things that we were able to find was this idea of being able to work with another company to be able to help us support, making sure that we had these jobs filled to a much better rate than what we were doing. With that, we are also able to see that there was one of these vendors that had a lot of success in many other states and also had success in this state. And so we were able to work, look at some of the history and the success of other states and other school districts along with another school district in New Mexico. And we made a decision to do this because it was something that was going to be best for kids. And so with that, I want to turn it over to some of our visitors today. These are representatives from ESS and they're going to give us, they have an opportunity to be able to give us an update on what's happened over the last couple of months. I'm really excited to be able to do that. I also have with us, I also don't want you to just hear it from me, I want you to be able to hear it from the end users, what's happening at the school sites. So we do have a number of principals here that are able to speak to this tonight. We do have some secretaries that are able to speak to this. We do have some teachers to speak to this and we do have some substitutions to do this. So very, if you, if you do us honor, we'd like to be able to quickly give you an update on where we are with this project. So with that, I'm going to turn it over to Joseph Redd.
We're delighted to have the opportunity to support Deming Public Schools. I'd like to introduce some colleagues from ESS. Mr. Fitzgerald is our chief operating officer. My name is Fred Benson. I work in partnerships with districts all across the state of New Mexico. Joseph Fitzgerald is our regional manager. Dana Paul, senior vice president. Lorena Sanchez, the title doesn't do it. We're just so blessed to have the opportunity to work with Miss Sanchez. Debbie French, trainer, professional learning specialist. Finding enough substitute teachers is vital to a school district. You know this. What I want to highlight very quickly is, is our entire organization exists for one specific function and that is to partner with school districts to ensure that you have enough high-quality substitutes for your classrooms and for your schools. This is a challenge across the state of New Mexico. This is a challenge across the United States of America. This impacts student achievement, student instruction, how the school works every day. It impacts safety and security to make sure that there is the right person in front of that room. When we had the opportunity to begin dialogue with the school district last spring, I tried to capture the four points or the four goals or the four reasons that Deming Public Schools was looking at this. And number one was improving efficiency. How can we most effectively and efficiently ensure that the right folks are in the right rooms at the right times? Two, it was made very clear by the administration that substitutes are an important part of the community, an important part of the district. So how can we work to have a strong, quality substitute pool receiving the support and attention that they deserve? Three, numbers, making sure that there's the right number of substitutes in the rooms. Fill rate means how many subs do you need a day and how many subs are showing up on time, ready to go. And then community involvement, making sure that this is done in a manner that is, that is part of the community and brings more jobs to the members of the community. So I'm going to introduce Joseph, I already introduced Joseph, but Joseph's going to walk through. These are the discussion items, these are the promises, these are the goals at the beginning, and we're delighted about the progress of this partnership so far. And Joseph's going to bring data and specifics to that dialogue.
Thank you, Fred. President Anderson, members of the board, Dr. Romero, a pleasure to be here today. First off, to talk a little about improving efficiencies, since we've been able to work with them and we've been able to enhance your approval process for your absences. We sat down, we reevaluated that so that the correct supervisors and department heads of the different absences were able to approve those absences so they were aware of what was going on in approving that. We also were able to have consistent supplemental absences with all the information so that we can then go and source the best qualified candidate for a position that is needed when you have those vacancies or, and then the absences. The next one was with us being able to focus on calling and be able to place subs, I know Lorena does this every day at 7:00 AM she starts, and we also have other, a regional center that also supports this, is that we're able to allow your front office now to spend more time with students, more time with the teachers so that they're not focused on filling classrooms, they're focused on instruction and be able to have everyday accounts with students. We've also been able, ESS made an investment in placing time attendance key ops at all of the locations. This is able, so we can capture accurate payroll and also billing so that we can have that be accurate for you. We've worked on an HIS integration, so HIS is your Human Resource Information System. So you also implemented iVisions and we've been able to provide data out of absent management that goes into iVisions so that you don't have that double entry for teachers. They don't have to go to one system to get a sub and go to another system to have the source record for their absences. So we've been able to do that integration. And we've also focused on improving the substitute training. So we really want to be able to provide training. We have world-class training, we have a lot of individuals behind our training programs for years to keep on making them better and better. And so we have live training, we'll talk about that a little bit further. So to speak to the numbers that Fred was talking about, last year for the school year, you had an 84% fill rate. Through today, since the beginning of our partnership, we have a 90% fill rate. And we are actually in the last five days at 100% fill rate. So we've been able to fill every absence since we came back from fall break. And we're, we had put 93 on here for spring, but right now we're already obtaining that. So that's not our limit, we'll keep on pushing that to fill your classrooms. A little bit about local recruiting. So one reason we've been able to reach 100% in the last several days is because of implementing all of our local recruiting. So had to get started, we had to come here in July and August and we've been able to start getting on all cylinders now. So at the end of the school year, Deming Public Schools had identified 98 working substitutes. As of today, we have 151 substitutes. And tomorrow, we're going to have Debbie back here and Atlanta in this room, we're going to be training another 30 individuals, so then we have to wait, you know, get the applications back from the head for those. And we have 10 that are waiting right now in the pending, so we have 40 individuals that we have targeted to be able to add. We think we could even be on a date in November if we're just there. And we're recruiting locally. Where individuals reside is, is going to be your best to be able to know your students, know their community. And so we've been able to recruit at duck days. And that's something I learned about, I didn't learn about ducks that are racing here in Llana County. We've had a table day to capture students at New Mexico State Western Branch. We were able to find a dozen individuals there and we've also just been to Llana County Fair.
So if I'm seeing this right, I want to interject for just a minute, is if I understand this correctly, you've been able to create about 50, over 50 jobs in the last couple of months in a county that has some of the lowest unemployment rates, in a county that has the lowest unemployment rate in the state. So it's a positive, we've got 50 new created, new jobs.
Yes, and we're still, we're still hiring. So just today, I was at Benji's and I put our now-hiring sign down and local businesses have been very supportive of allowing us to put our materials there and we, it's always great to be able to offer work to individuals, it's great when they do. A little about our training program. So we were able to hire Debbie French, who's here with us today. She also is the present, interim president in the chamber, so we're lucky to get her with her all over the country. And in our training, we have content-specific training. So tomorrow we'll be having our instructional training, but we also have partnered with the maintenance department. So thank you for us to be able to do custodial-specific training for our custodial substitutes and also with food services, do food service-specific training and transportation also with their bus assistants that we're supporting. And all of this is to be able to help provide our new hires to be professional, to be well-prepared and to be able to be an asset on day one when they come into the classroom. I wanted to give an opportunity for Debbie French to talk a little bit about the training.
Thank you. We have a lot of things that we go through, but some of the very specific things are to dress professional, be on time, meet the school secretaries, principals, so they know you're in that classroom, you promised to be there, that you're in there. We also work on, in the training, we work on collaboration. What works well for those who've had experience in the classroom? Classroom management, I teach these ladies and gentlemen that if, if the classroom management isn't there, there's not a lot of learning going on. And so, and then content-specific training. We talk about how to get their attention, how to follow the lesson plans. One of the things I tell the teachers is that, these teachers to be, is that, that teachers have a lot of material to cover in a year. And when they write those lesson plans down, you need to follow them. They're not there to blow up the day, tell them the answer, do whatever you want to do. You're there to teach the material that they have set aside for you to do. And they're very receptive of this. We're giving them how to manage classrooms. Look for the charts on the wall at elementary, there's always a behavior chart, you know, what the teacher expects of the kids each day. At secondary, how to get their attention, how to get them focused. We give them ideas on how to, what do they want to know, what do they want to learn, what are the discussions or collaboration or just how to get the material across in case whatever they're trying to do isn't working, what else can they do? So we've had real terrific success in the first few trainings that we have.
What I love about it, and I've never seen this before, is when we
What I love about it, and I've never seen this before, is we actually have organized and professional development for substitutes. But the only thing that I really loved about it is the collaboration going on between that group of substitutes. They were getting to know each other, they were learning from each other, and they continue to be a support system for each other moving forward, which was, I thought, was a great benefit.
One of the quotes I have up there on the wall, I always, I always had quotes on my wall, is "There's no substitute for a great substitute."
Right.
Just to clarify, this type of training has never been done in the district before, am I correct? To this extent?
Correct.
Not that I know of. It wasn't when I was teaching.
Yeah, just to wrap up, you know, for a company like ours to be successful, we have to fulfill our commitments, and we have to be involved in the community. Our E S S, Demi Public Schools, live and work in this community. They're part of the fabric, as we all need to be. And some of the events that we've just gotten involved with, the War of Code Drive, Celebration Alive, members of the Chamber of Commerce, we want you to know that we're dedicated to our partnership. We view ourselves as an extension of the district, and we're here to partner with you today and in the future. As trends change and things change and develop in education, we believe we're a great resource. We currently do business with over six hundred school districts, seventy of them were new last year, and we give each and everyone the attention they deserve, and you have our commitment and guarantee that we're going to be there for you guys.
So at this time, I wanted to be able to end this presentation, and I kind of talked a little bit about this, because I don't want you to hear it from us, or from these gentlemen. I want you to be able to hear it from the school sites and what happens there. So I'm going to turn over to Ms. Ryanart for just a minute. I know you brought some individuals with you, so I'm going to go ahead and ask them to come up to you and kind of share it for us, what's happened, what's the story.
I'm going to talk to you. Good evening, President Anderson, members of the board, Dr. Romero. Today, I'm going to talk to you from the school's perspective, before we had E S S and what it looks like now, since we've been implementing E S S. Before E S S, I'm going to talk to you from two different school sites. I was at Bell and Memorial, and so I've seen it from two sites, at two sites. Before E S S, teachers would put their absences in, and the teachers were primarily the ones responsible for finding their subs. Most of the time, the teachers would call the day of the absence and say, "I'm sorry, I couldn't find a sub, and I'm not coming in." So that left it for the secretary or the principal to try to find the sub. So most of the day in the morning was spent looking for subs. And doing that, we weren't able to do our other day-to-day work. Since E S S, teachers now put in their leave, and E S S finds the subs. We do not worry about it. At Bell, since the beginning of the school year, we've had two, on two occasions, the positions were not filled, and that was during the first week of implementation. Since then, we have not had one position not filled. So subs are coming. The subs understand the system, so they walk into the school, they greet the secretary, just like they said they are doing that. They come in, they greet the secretary, they clock in, they go to their assignment, they have their materials that they need, they have their lesson plans, they're ready to go. Then, at the end of the day, they clock out. Because of this process, our secretary, Mrs. Dean, is able to focus on important stuff like dealing with parents and dealing with students and making sure our school is ready for operation. And now I'm going to turn it over because we have different points, perspectives on how the system works.
So since E S S, we've had a variety of people coming into sub at Bell, which has been awesome. In fact, we just want to point out that E S S was recruiting high-level employees, and we were actually able to steal one as a D A. So you guys are bringing some great people to the district. I really appreciate it. So thank you.
I just want to point out how in the past, we, I used to worry about the getting subs.
Could you introduce yourselves, because I don't think I read those.
I'm sorry. My name is Justinine Pien, I'm the secretary at Bell School. And in the past, I used to worry about in the evenings or in my weekends that we do will face up when a teacher called in. But ever since E S S was brought in, it's been, I've been free of that. I have no stress whatsoever for it. So I really like it. I really enjoy it.
Hello, my name is Victoria Pacheco, and I am a kindergarten teacher at Bell Elementary. From a teacher's perspective, a day out of the classroom has to be utilized to the fullest. We want to ensure that the days spent without the teacher has value and content is still being taught. With subs from E S S, lesson plans are being implemented to the fullest and instruction days are not being wasted. At Bell Elementary, it is our mission to deliver high, rigorous instruction to ensure students have equitable access to learning. With E S S, I feel confident that the subs will be able to continue that mission. Thank you.
Thank you all so much.
For President Anderson, members of the board, Dr. Romero. As the second largest, well, the second-largest school in Demi Public Schools, I know finding subs is a very difficult thing to do. And being an administrator for the last fourteen years, I can remember getting those phone calls sometime early in the morning or even five, six, six a.m. in the morning, and getting ahold of our secretary, who then had to get a list, or we would kind of share the list to see if we can start getting subs ready for eight fifteen. And so now having E S S as part of our district, that's kind of taken care of for us. We've got subs first thing in the morning. I don't have to ask who's absent. Teachers in the past would not take a day out because they, you know, they wanted to be with their kids, but, and then they would continue to get sick, and then all of a sudden they're out for two weeks. And so just finding now that teachers are putting in their sick leave, they're getting well, and then they're coming right back to us. I also want to talk a little bit about one of our long-term subs who we're really excited, has done a wonderful job with one of our math classes. And in fact, we're waiting to see if one of the teachers will be coming back, and then we're looking to hopefully move her to another long-term position because she's just so reliable and is there on time. And I'm just excited that I can go to school and get started and know that there's subs in all the classrooms. So I'll tell you all this. Mr. Vidia.
My name's Gabriel Vidia. I'm the secretary at Red Mountain. A lot of what was already said is very true. That's what I've experienced. I think the biggest thing that I can think of that comes to mind is I don't worry anymore. That was the biggest thing. It's a huge headache in the morning sometimes trying to figure out how we're going to staff and fill these classrooms with subs that we don't have. That just doesn't happen anymore. That hasn't been my experience. If I do have a vacancy that isn't filled, Lorena's on the phone with me immediately calling saying, "Who do you need and, you know, what can I help you with?" So she's calling me before I'm calling her, which I think is awesome. So she's been a great asset to that as well. So I think that's just the biggest thing. A lot of what has been said, I would just be repeating, but I just don't worry about it anymore, and it's been really great. Thank you.
Thank you. I know we have a couple of the principals in the audience. I'm going to call you real quick to see if you have anything to add to this. I'm not going to ask you to repeat anything, but I know I see Mr. Soderberg there and Mr. Sandoval there. Anything you want to add to that? I want the board to be able to see good representation from across the district about how things are going.
Just really for our perspective from our school side at Chuck Ralph. I know in the past, we would have subs coming in last minute or just not showing up to fill a position, and so it really feels like there's been a higher level of professionalism happening since E S S has come in, and it's really been nice to have that, just knowing that, again, like what everybody else is stating, that we know that it's not something we have to worry about, and we can actually put our attention to our students, to our staffs, and really make sure that that's good. And then we know exactly where our subs are, and we're able to go in and check in with them as well, and make sure everything's good there, and have that communication and that relationship built. I know they did speak to that there are new faces coming in. Usually, we're very reliable, or we rely really heavily on our go-to people, and it's our same subs that always come into the building. But it's been nice seeing the new faces, and they're really quality people that are coming in with that. And then I know there's some perks to the program. We're able, I know each month here, I'm being able to submit like subs of the month for recognition and do some of those pieces, as well as, you know, anytime I have to call the company, they're always very professional. I know I talk to Lincoln a lot when I have to call in. If I have to fill a position, my staff is really good about saying, "I've talked to this sub, they can work for me on Tuesday, and so I can fill that position." Even the secretary herself can fill that and assign that sub to that absence. But if for some reason the system doesn't allow them to, I just contact E S S, and they, very quickly, they're very pleasant, and they're really good to work with from my perspective.
Thank you. Spaka.
Sorry, Spaka, real quick. Can you please add what quality you see as far as better training, I mean, better prepared as compared to before, if you can see any changes?
Sure, sure. So, good evening. I know a lot of this, again, is repeat. The professionalism truly is there because of the trainings that are offered. And to add to it, I mean, each school site is different, and so we do step in and help and we support them. But just going back to that whole worry-free, it just takes a load off our head as the principal, being able to go in. Now, I feel a little unprepared. I don't have exact numbers. It's not a hundred percent, but it's very high percentage of fill rate. If the job is not filled, as somebody else mentioned, we can call Lorena, and she is amazing, and she starts reaching out and finding the correct people to fill the position. Some other positions are difficult to fill. They're music, they're P E kind of positions, we have dual-language classes, and so then that ups it just a little bit more because then we need to find a bilingual person who could also go into those classrooms. And they're out there. So we do have our regular substitutes, as was mentioned, and they're always there for us. We use those more as our long-term subs, but the fact that we're getting more and more subs makes me feel very confident as we move forward that we'll continue to have that good, excellent fill rate. Anything else?
Spaka.
Good evening. I'm Lorena Spaka, I'm the principal at Memorial Elementary. And I'd just like to echo a couple of the things that I've heard already. One of the things that I think is beneficial in working with E S S is the diversity of the pool. And I appreciate being able to expose the students at our school to lots of different people. While it's beneficial to be able to have some of the same people all the time, we also want to see our kids see themselves reflected in the people they see in front of them, and so the diversity of the pool is exciting to me. It's been different to see people that I've never seen before, but that's exciting as well because I think it's beneficial for our kids. I don't have necessarily anything to speak to about the contrast. I think that subs, in my experience before, were prepared, and they are continuing to be well-prepared, but I am excited as a principal, as a teacher, I was always concerned about being out of the classroom, and that classroom management was always a concern for me. And my number-one priority as principal is the safety of students. And so putting a priority on training subs, when we have such a diverse pool, training them in classroom management, that's really important to me because I want to know that my kids are going to be safe and that they're going to be treated with respect, and just safe, bottom line, safe. And I think that that has been what I've seen, and I appreciate that, and I've had a good experience working with E S S.
Amy Natale, E S S.
Good evening. My name's Jermaine Starce, and I'm a current E S S employee. What I like about the E S S is that if you're going to accept a job offer, it gives you two options. You can log on online and/or the automated system calls you. I prefer online because I can see and pick my days, which I usually work every day, and then it lets me see who the teacher is, what school it is, and it allows the teachers to attach notes, optional, or if not, just say, "Report to the front office." So that way, it at least gives me where I need to go. Also, on the I D bench, it has the E S S number. So if you have any questions, like as an employee, you can call the E S S number, and they're really good about answering right away, answering any questions you have. They're also the toll-free number to call in to accept jobs, or you can email the E H R, which is very convenient. I've had to call them a few times, and they, someone's always answered me, and I haven't had any problems. Also, what they're doing as well, I received an email that, like, if you're substituting and say you sub more days than you normally do, you get entered into a drawing, and at the end of the month, you have a chance of winning either electronics, appliances, or gift cards. So they also reward the substitutes as well.
Okay. So did you do substitute, uh, teaching part to E S S?
No, ma'am, I did not.
So they recruited you?
They recruited me as well, and then I was sent to the training, which was very helpful. I've never seen, like, a substitute, any training like that, but it was very helpful, the training, it helps prepare you and see what you need to, you know, to offer.
Thank you. Yep.
Good afternoon. My name is Tracy Martinez, and I'm the head secretary at Demi Intermediate School. And I am here to let you guys know about the positivity that we get back from the students as far as the employees that are working for E S S. They come to us with so much excitement about how professional they are, how they are learning and learning the science that we do, being the head of a Catholic gift card school. The amount of time that us secretaries don't have to waste anymore on time cards or chasing the subs down to come back and fill in those time cards, it's amazing. The support that we have from Lorena, it's just tremendous. Like Gabriel says, she's contacting us before we have to contact her.
Which is very awesome.
She is. I have nothing but positive to say about this. I'm very grateful that we can have this in our district. Thank you.
Good evening. I just have a couple of points that I don't think were talked about, but we've hired a couple of new staff members at our school, at Demi Intermediate School, and Lorena has been amazing in getting those people added to the system. So if they do have to take off, they're ready, and we know that they're going to be covered by a sub because they have been placed in the system. So thank you for being so efficient at that. And something that's really exciting that I attribute probably to what Debbie said about the training, seeing subs on duty. It tells me that they're reading lesson plans. It tells me that they're being, that's something that they're being talked about, that is being talked about in the training, and that just goes back to student safety. When we are without a teacher, we're down one set of eyes on duty. So to have them there and not to have to call and say, "Where are you?" They show up, and they are eager and willing to help in any way, so just an overall positive experience with E S S.
Thank you. So that concludes our presentation. Do we have any other comments here? Or anybody? Are there any? Let me give the board a chance first, and then I'll get to you. Board members, any comments, questions?
I can speak personally. My daughter was in kindergarten last year. Unfortunately, this is the teacher that she had became ill, so she had to step out for the semester. For a couple of weeks, there were substitutes coming in and out. I didn't see a change in her. We're constantly working at home with her. They did find somebody to fill the long-term position. When I sat down at the end of the year, you know, I started talking to her, how's everything going? And I asked a simple question. I didn't get a report card. Can I see her grade on this test? Because they were telling us, you know, "We're taking these tests, we're taking these tests, so make sure they're prepared." She didn't even know how to get in the system. So that was a problem, and then, so red flags. I just asked her, you know, "What's going on?" She said, "Well, we rely on other teachers, they get busy, you know, we don't really have anything set in place to help us out." Yes, there's support is there from the staff, but other than that, as far as learning the system, we really don't have that. So now, I can say, and I can speak from fact and experience, that before, there was a system, there were people prepared, and me personally, I mean, we're here, why are we here? We always talk about it. We're here for the kids, not for anything else. We're here for the kids. We want the best for the kids. I can speak, I want the best for my daughter. I want to know that whoever's coming in that day or that hour, that morning, is going to be the best that we can provide. And if it takes an outside company of Demi New Mexico to come in and provide that and provide that training for people who are here in the community, I mean, what is it, fifty-plus people that aren't at Workforce Solutions, getting their checks from the state are now employed, and also not only employed, but trained to be permanently employed. I mean, that's nothing but positive. So the, there was a semi-broken system last year, and with you guys... and with you guys coming in, I mean, obviously, you hear it. It's done nothing but improved immensely on relieving stress from secretaries, which they don't, shouldn't have to deal with. You know, yes, things happen. Yes, people get sick. Yes, kids get sick. But secretaries have other things that they have to do. And so, thank you. I mean, I can speak personally. Now, I know that the people are coming in, they're trained in all areas. You know, not only that, I know you guys do follow-throughs. How are you doing? How are things going? You don't get just trained one time. You have multiple trainings. You know, that way, the people that are in our schools for our kids, for the betterment of our kids, that they're the best that we can provide. So, thank you.
Any other board comments?
Let me ask you. I know that there's been some concerns in custodian and food service for, we have used for substitutes if somebody's sick. A lot of these people are, some people are feeling like we're training them to get rid of them and actually just use ESS as a provider. Can you clarify that?
Absolutely. So, that is not the intent or the mission of what ESS does. They're there to be able to support us, to be able to give us the best substitute service. So, those services are going to be in the area of teachers, EAs, food services, custodians. And so, we want to be able to, we want to be able to provide an environment where if an employee needs to take off for whatever reason that is, whether it's bereavement, sick, professional development, they're able to do that without the stress of having to feel like they're leaving their job, and be able to do that and come back and know that while they were gone, they had a professional person in place that had training and support to be able to do that. So, that at no time is going to be the intent, and that will at no time will ever happen. We value our employees. We need them. They're all part of a family that we have within Deming Public Schools and the Deming community.
Can you add, I'm sorry, real quick, was it, I just wanted to ask, of the substitutes that worked prior to ESS coming in, how many of those did we hire, or are still hired as substitutes?
You may have to help me, Denise. I believe that we had 98 active subs in the last year, and we have hired back 94 of those subs, 95 of those substitutes. So, we're close to 100% of those subs are working backwards.
Mr. President, I just wanted to say, I didn't realize that Ms. French and Ms. Sanchez were the two local hires. I think that really speaks to the standard that you guys were bringing in. I don't know Ms. Sanchez as well, but what I do know, you're a really wonderful person. You work really hard. And Ms. French, I know you do a lot for the community you have for a long time. So, it's reassuring to me to see both of you in these positions. So, thanks for stepping up and doing that.
Any other board comments?
All right. I have two requests for comments from Carol Neber and Fran Tilner.
Let Jane go first. She didn't fill the paper up, but she can't see, so.
Go ahead. You give us your name, please.
I'm Jane Fercano, and as you can obviously see, I am a part of this community that no longer has children in school, either in this district or anywhere else in the country. But there were two issues that were not talked about. I think that we, maybe in my generation, are interested in also. One is privatizing coming into our public schools. And that is one thing that concerns most of us very much. Also, that my taxes are now going out of state, and we would prefer that they stayed here in New Mexico and were used here in this school district because I don't think you'll find anybody that does not want the best education for their children, but we also want it done here. Thank you.
Thank you.
Same thing with you, Julie.
My name is Fran Tilner. I worked at Deming for nine years. I do not have any children in the system. I congratulate ESS on their very professional and very slick presentation along with their loading the cannons with all the good ammunition they can get. I'm a little more irritated now than I was when I arrived. Nothing that I say or any of us say is going to make any difference. You've already covered, you know all about the legalities, the effect on the other employees. Of those 94 people who've come back as substitutes, I suspect that maybe some of them did it in protest but had no other choice because this was their income that they needed. The thing that really bothers me about this, and that Jane touched on, was that what this does, and this is philosophical, I understand, it isn't going to change anybody's mind, but I'm going to tell you anyway. This contract opens the door to privatizing our public education system by hiring for-profit businesses. I don't care how good a job they do. I'm appalled that the city of Deming, this Deming school system couldn't spend this money and get a better system here with our people, with our tax money staying here instead of sending it to wherever the heck it's going. I realize that the trend nowadays to privatize everything, prisons, ham-frogs, parks, whatever, I'm not convinced that those work very well, you know, a lot of cases. That's just what's happening. I'm not happy with it. Free, locally controlled, public education is the backbone of this country, and we are giving it away to people who don't live here, who don't know our kids, who half of them probably couldn't find Deming on the map, and only care about their profit margin. And I'm sure that there are people that don't agree with me, but that's the way I feel about it. I think that we need to be careful what kind of slippery slope we're going down, what kind of doors we're opening. What are they going to do? Hire the full-time teachers next? Maybe we could replace Dr. Romero, I don't know. It makes no sense to me that we have to take this funding and give it to them when our apparently broken system could have been fixed from here and kept it local and not privatized it. And I realize nothing I say is going to make any difference, but I got it off my chest, and I don't have to rattle that to the others, but maybe I'll do that anyway. Thank you for your time.
Thank you.
President Anderson, the board, and Superintendent Ramon, I'm kind of annoyed too. And I just first want to say something really positive. And I know Lorena Sanchez, and she's just tough. She's bright. She's a marvelous person. I don't know Ms. French. I get the impression she's doing a very good job too. And these are really important jobs, and these are local people. That's what we want. We want local people. We want our money to go to pay people like Lorena and Ms. French and all the other people who've been working so hard for the district, and Carol Hatch, who were treated like dirt. And that really makes me upset. And I don't see any reason. And Ms. Cruz, I've never, just seen your face once before, but you said it yourself, the system is broken. This is an incredible presentation. It should have been done a long time ago, before this contract was ever signed, before the public, but it wasn't. And that's another story. I'm not going to get in there. But I don't, I haven't heard anything tonight that tells me that we couldn't have hired Lorena Sanchez, Ms. French, and some other people, qualified people, to do exactly what these other people are doing. I'm not convinced of that. Now, maybe it was a good idea. I don't know. I've been spending quite a lot of time following this. I've been reading in the newspaper. Some of you might have read my opinion column. I asked a lot of questions. I didn't get any answers. And sometimes, it's not what people do, it's how they do it. And I think this was done very poorly, very, very poorly. And even if, you heard some comments earlier about legality. I'm not an attorney. I don't know all the details. I can't speak to the legality of what you did. I know there've been some concerns, but even if, even if your actions in contracting with ESS are shown to be legal, and they will be because they're going to be investigated, I understand, not many of the other people have put in claims, I feel that your actions have been very shameful. By acting in a way that is the opposite of open and transparent, you have betrayed our public trust. We, the taxpaying public, expect all of you to be open, honest, and transparent. We expect you to know the laws of our state and to follow those laws and to act fairly and in the best interest of our students, employees, and us, the taxpayers. People were harmed by your actions. First in line were the approximately 100 substitute employees who were blindsided just a few weeks before they all expected to return to their jobs. In July, as Carol stated earlier, this whole class of employees were, received a letter from the district stating that they no longer work for the district, and if they wanted to continue to work for the district, they were required to hire on with ESS. Some chose not to. But there were plenty of those people with families to support, bills to pay, who needed those jobs. And they signed on with ESS whether they liked it or not. What else could they do with such short notice? Pick up a quick job in Deming? It just doesn't exist, and we all know that. The next in line were the taxpayers who put all of you in your jobs, and we pay your salaries. After the fact, and most of us found out about this through reading it in the newspaper, because it wasn't brought up at a regular board meeting, we found out that a contract had been signed without our knowledge. As a result, the substitute employees' wages are now marked up 31% for profit that goes directly out of our community, out of our state. A lot of us feel that's not really what we want to be doing with our money. Plus, the district, according to the contract, which I've read, the district is still paying for training, which we were told, and that the district could not provide. This doesn't make any sense to me. We have this wonderful person here. She's providing training. Why couldn't the district pay her to do the training instead of an out-of-state company who's taking a 31% profit on her wage, whatever that is? Besides training, another reason we were told that this change was necessary was the high turnover rate of substitute seats. In the newspaper, you can read it. Why should anybody stay on a district job when the starting wage at Walmart is higher? Because those minimum wage and low wage payments are still going to be paid to our lowest and most vulnerable people by ESS. But the difference is, it's not being paid out of the district, and there's a 31% markup. Okay. That money would be better spent as providing a raise for our already low-paid employees who could, that would help them improve their standard of living. That money would be spent in our community, and it would stay in our state. The public has lost confidence in you, and employees have, you've lost their trust. And I believe this highlights the need for employees to have the protection of the union.
Any other comments? Dr. Ramon?
Thank you, Mr. President. At this time, I do recommend the approval of the ESS West LLC substitute staff.
Recommendations for approval, is there a motion?
No.
It's been moved, is there a second?
Second.
Moved and seconded, all those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed?
Thank you.
I refuse. Seconded and pressed. That ends the action items. We'll move into the superintendent report.
Thank you, Mr. President. We do have a few items on this. We'll try to be brief with this. We do want to be able to give a finance update. We've been able to do some wonderful things over the last 15 months, and I want to turn it over to Mr. Doyle to just give you a quick update of what we're at.
Thank you. Mr. President, members of the board, Dr. Ramon, we will be receiving on Thursday our draft financial statements, and we will then be convening an audit committee meeting to discuss those. The financial statements are due to the state auditor on November 15th, so we'll make sure and meet that deadline. This is actually far sooner than we received them last year, so I'm excited that we'll be able to get it actually before the deadline. So, that's kind of exciting.
Yes, thank you, Ms. Doyle.
She said brief.
So, a lot of hard work. Well, what I want to say is, I want to give Ms. Doyle and the finance team a lot of kudos here. They've done a lot of hard work to be able to improve our systems, our efficiencies, and our taxpayer dollars. And so, if the results are paying off, we don't have the report yet, but I really do anticipate that it's going to be very positive in our favor. So, thank you, Ms. Doyle.
We've prepared a couple of questions.
Correct, correct. Are there any other questions?
Questions on the conference report?
All right, very quickly, just a construction update. Mr. Borden is not here tonight, so I'm going to try to do my best to do Mr. Borden's impression. I'll probably fail miserably. But as you can see, lots happening across the district. One of the big things that are happening is, you can see that as you drive past our old Deming Intermediate School, you can see the walls coming down. So, I know this is a, this is very impactful for our community, but it is happening where the whole thing will probably take about 60 days from start. We're about 10 days into that. We're looking at about another 30 days or so, 40 days, to be able to complete that demolition project. And then we will be moving on as part of, could be part of our, in the future, we do upgrade to the Mario Stadium as part of a parking lot upgrade. I also just want to say that Thursday, we have our ribbon cutting for our new Deming Intermediate. So, we would love to be able to invite the board and also the community to come out that evening. We start at?
5:30.
5:30. So, if you've not been out to that building site, this is a firm that kind of do that. We're going to have students out there. They're going to be able to give tours, and we are very much looking forward to that opportunity. So, with that, I'm going to leave that as our, as our construction updates. A lot of things happening at the Deming Intermediate sites.
Questions?
I just have one in the last, repetitively in the last pictures, and I've gotten from Mr. Borden on Mopac, it's construction. Roof panels, ceiling panels are not in yet. Are we still waiting on inspection?
I don't know the answer to that. I will get you the answer. I know that that, yeah, so the hanging framing is in, but the ceiling panels aren't in yet?
Yeah, we're not inspecting them.
Right. So, I know that we've talked about it, but I don't have an exact date from when they're going to be in. I will get that for you.
All right.
Any other questions?
I'm, I'm, the construction of the intermediate school. I know that a lot of the concern, I know that a lot of the concern was asbestos.
Yes.
So, where are they taking?
So, we have contracted with an asbestos abatement vendor, and they have completed that asbestos abatement. So, much of that asbestos is going to lie within the glue for, like, the tiles, glue for the tiles on the floor and the ceiling. And so, it's a, it's a very intense process to be able to abate that correctly. And they have the ability to be able to dispose of that property, and that's why we do that. It's expensive, but also timely process, but it's also necessary. So, they have completed the abatement of the entire facility, and that's why they were able to go in and start demolition.
So, then all of the other scrap is well retained?
Correct. So, there, so that facility there has no asbestos.
Yes, my question is, where are they taking all of the stuff made out?
I don't know the exact answer to that either. You know, that's part of the reason that we have, and asbestos crew come out to be able to dispose of it properly. But I can definitely ask that question, is where does it actually end up?
My understanding, it goes to asbestos storage facility, where it stays forever. And my, the other thing I understand is that if that company ever goes broke or goes out of business, we have to figure out what to do with it.
It's not the bricks and the fires and all the curds, you know, they take it out of fire.
Some of it's recycled. A lot of it, they, what they can recycle, they recycle, the rest goes out to the.
If you go by there, you're going to see piles of metal, aluminum, wire, things like that. So, they're going to do as much as they can to recoup some of their costs for demolition.
So, they'll sell it to scrap, and there is some.
All right. And then on to item C. We have two items on there, policy that was for our first read. And so, we have our travel policy number 522. Basically, what this is, is this is going to remind you of the board policy that we updated a month ago, just to bring us in line with what the state allows us for reimbursement for mileage. And as we did that, we realized that the employee And as we did that, we realized that the employee reimbursement had the same issue. So this is, basically what this is doing is just taking out the amount, which was 32 cents. Now, it's actually across the state at 44 cents. But we're going to go ahead and what we're recommending in this first read is that we just remove that language so that if they just change again through years, our policy will be able to stay current with what the recommendations are, what the state allows us to be able to reimburse the mileage. Again, this is just the first read. We can absolutely accept feedback over the next week. Then our last one is purchasing procedures number 525. This again, just brings us into line with the state, which is allowing us to move micropurchases from $3,500 to $10,000. So again, this is just bringing us in line with what the state is allowing us to do. This is a first read, so you're welcome to go and read it and ask us any questions. Still, do I want to add anything to that? Did I get that right?
It's actually the federal guidelines.
Federal, right.
So this is based on uniform guidance that feds have increased the micropurchase significantly. So that's much less work for us.
So with that, that was my updates and reports.
Thank you. All right. With that then, are there any announcements? I wrote down the one you've already made, so we'll skip that. Board members, please remember to, are there any other announcements? All right. If not, board members, remember to complete your full stealth reforms before you leave. Are there any board member requests for agenda items? If not, next board member, next board meeting, I understand we need to change the date again, just like we did this one. There's a conflict at Columbus Elementary. The next meeting is at Columbus Elementary in November, as it traditionally is. But there's a conflict with meeting there on the Thursday we're supposed to meet. So we're going to move it to a different date. So what's the different date?
Yes, Mr. President. So next month, we are scheduled to have it on the 15th.
What's the agenda, the agenda's a different day. It's a Tuesday, right?
So what we're asking is to move it to the 13th. And this is actually a request from the school side. So next month, the board meeting is over at Columbus Elementary. It's always a treat to be able to go down there and have the board meeting there, be able to be a part of that community. But because of just kind of extenuating circumstances they're asking, the board meeting is to be moved up a couple of days. They would like to be able to participate in the state professional development opportunity, which is La Cuesta. And they don't want to have, they don't have to, they want to be bold. So if it's with the board's commission, to be able to allow that for the school at their request.
Everybody change their smartphones.
We'll send out rumors.
13th at 5.
13th at 5, which is a Tuesday.
The meals are at 4 or something like that.
Correct.
All right. Anything else? If not, motion to adjourn. Is there a second?
Aye.
Is there a second? We are adjourned.
Thank you, everyone.
Jeremy, thank you so much. You did a great job.
Thanks, Lorena. Appreciate you.
I normally have about 90% on staff, but a lot of times we're still worried that we're talking about what their goals and we're showing their it's really hard to get a lot of room for that. We were like, thank you, Sarah.
Oh, and Alexis is still mad about.
Oh, I got it on my desk.
It was Noah grabbed it off.
Yeah.
Where he had set it.